Hey Larry.
Hello Louise.
Hi.
You can hear us Louise?
I can, can you hear me? Are you, Larry, you're recording on YouTube or no? This livestream?
Livestream and then it'll be recorded on there. So I'm trying right now, so. Make sure it works for tonight.
Is that the Queen's wave? There you go. Very nice, very nice. Mr. Frank, don't get too comfortable in that chair.
Hello.
Unless you take steno, because if you take steno, pal, more power to you. Is that my pen? All right. George is muted, so I can't hear him.
It is.
Is it?
Yes.
You owe me forty cents, pal.
All right, let's start this. Eric is still running a little late, had a little accident, so. No.
That's on the. I'm about to try to mute that.
ECP. ECP.
Where? People should identify themselves. I don't think it's how it's said.
That's what we need to do. More. Keep going.
There we go.
Mr. Johnson, how are you? All right, so, let's start this. Two hundred and fifty, anniversary's still going. Yeah, magnets, we put them out, give them out to business, has been a huge success. People were calling, coming in, getting them, I took them to the seniors, they all wanted it. Rosemary, like, no, make sure we give them out, because they will take them all. So it was good. And so we need to order more. So we're gonna order another. Two hundred and fifty. And pens, we're gonna order these pens. But you can have the logo around to give out to. People at different events. Put out beach balls. Without at different events. And. We ordered a thousand. Construction helmets. And I'm looking at them and I said, okay, what is missing? So we're gonna order three hundred stickers. To put on them with the logo, so that the logo of the kind of walker would be on the helmets.
How big are the stickers?
Huh?
It has the towel logo.
It has the towel logo in the front, so, but this is.
Isn't that the anniversary thing?
Yes, that'd be anniversary, I believe these are two by one and a half or something.
So they're small stickers? There's too many colors that would get through on the helmet. They're not just, I mean, they're small helmets for kids.
It suggested we get the tote bags with the logo on it. It's been a thing, do we do? Orange, we do black. We'd like your guys' input on this. We're gonna get about three hundred. Remember, these have been getting, we're gonna be giving them out year round.
Yeah. So, and it's gonna have the, that on there.
On both sides.
So then, I don't, I don't think, and it's gonna be red like that and everything like that.
Yeah.
Right, so, this is where I'm going with this, and I don't think, yeah, I don't think orange is the proper color.
Black.
Black, white. Right? I'm cool with black.
And the last thing that, you know, most important is the T-shirt. Look at the logo, this is where, we came up with the logo, we took out the flags from the bottom.
Yeah, much cleaner.
Took out the little seventeen seventy-two. What was gonna be more money, we put the seventeen seventy-two logo on.
Sleeper pockets, yeah. This is good, this is, this is not so busy.
So. Make a motion to purchase the magnet pens, tote bags and shirts. Yeah, all the totals are here. I've got the T-shirt, it's gonna be. Well, do you think we should do about five hundred or a thousand?
Of?
T-shirts. That's, that's.
Is there a discount for a higher number?
Yeah. Yeah. Six seventy-five, if you get.
So you're saving about seven hundred and fifty dollars to do a thousand.
Six seven five oh.
The pens, looks like they're two hundred, two hundred and fifty pens?
Yes.
Two hundred and nine dollars. The beach balls.
It's three ninety-six, four thirty-six. And the stickers are, what is my, I can see this, is this a sticker or is this the bill?
That's. Balls right now, that's balls. You can't give me a total. Seventy-four, seventy-six. Wait. We've also got the bags.
Yeah, six, seven, fifty, three sixty-four.
The bags look like they're three hundred and sixty-four dollars for three hundred of them. Seven eighty, forty, sixty-four. So I'm up to a thousand ninety. Then the T-shirts. Five hundred of them. Do this, do a thousand and six, seven, fifty. Fifty-seven, fifty. Without the stickers, I get seventy, forty. That's what I get, a different number? Nope.
We need forty-eight.
That's what I got. Seven thousand eight hundred forty dollars. Could be taken from the appropriate line.
That, I don't know, I think we, we put fifteen, and I think we're, have spent a little over four or five.
That's the thing, so, so, we have it, but. Can you have that for the next meeting?
Yep.
Itemized what we spent on everything, so. Yeah. I'm up for air.
Could I have the total again for tonight?
Seven thousand eight hundred and forty even.
Thanks.
That's for the shirts, pens, tote bags and beach balls.
And magnets. That is magnets. It's magnets. What, magnets, pens, tote bags, shirts?
No beach balls? And beach balls. And beach ball T-shirts. I don't know. Is this four forty, Larry?
That's the magnets.
Okay, so the numbers though, so. Hang on Louise, adjustment, plus four forty. Eight thousand two eighty. That's the total.
Eight, two, eight, zero.
With the magnets.
Make a motion, spend eight thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Magnet pens, tote bags, shirts and beach balls. Sorry.
Just, just for my. So there was an adjustment on, on your price that was there, that way. Yeah, we forgot to add that. Magnets. And. Beach balls. Tote bags. And a thousand T-shirts. Total. Eight thousand two eighty, so there's a motion, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, the second was Mr. Coin?
Mr. Coin seconded.
Okay, Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you, all right, everyone knows we had coffee and conversation with the supervisor. On this past Saturday. Was a success. You know, we, we had about twenty-five people here and much showed up to come and thank you. For showing up, showing support. Johnson, under the weather. Had some good conversation with the residents. Who showed up and a lot of the questions they wanted to know basically, curious how town government work. Trying to explain to them how it works, got your board. It was good, overall, it was a good time, we're gonna do it again. Possibly in April, we'll look at the schedule, we'll do it again. And I think once the work gets out, the Facebook business, it was a good, good day. Coffee was good, we had some good stories, overall was good, any feedback on the council thing?
So, just questions, do you want to try and do it once a month kind of thing?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it was a good turnout, you know what, provided people continue to show, continue to do it, you know?
Yeah, I got a sense that it was all positive, people showed up and I think it was well organized, you know, they were taking names and they got to speak to you, so. You being the new supervisor, I think it's, it's good that they did not, we, we had one on one. And the coffee was.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for open government, you know, more people I could talk to, but. Overall was good, I enjoyed the conversation. Basically, I listened. Definitely a good day, I think it, it really cut the time, you know, kudos to, you know, to Larry for getting it together. Okay. Anyone get to see the ones, there's some bills left over from twenty-one. Everyone get a chance to see them. Make a motion to approve the warrants.
Sorry.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
The warrants, we're doing the warrants, so.
Okay.
Roll call.
You have, did you do, I think she said two?
Yes, twenty-one.
Two warrants?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second?
I, I motion, Mr. Coin, second.
Okay. Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
So the recommendations of our founder Davies are implemented, I'm gonna have to say.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay, one thing, I forgot to point on the topic, but everyone knows, the next Thursday, we're hosting St. Patrick's Day lunch for seniors. Down at Community Center, we'll start at twelve, you know, everyone's come help out, we did get some people from. Last Saturday who want to volunteer, they're gonna come down to help us, it's gonna be a dining in and. Carry out, if people want to come, we'll give them a lunch to go. Been, we've been getting a lot of calls, you know, people want to come, they want to sit. And you'll see the pictures, we did, when our local community businessman did donate. Non-alcoholic beverages, but beverages for the seniors, so we have them, we got them. So, it'll be, yeah, and, you know, we picked it up today. I think they didn't like that.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the counselor down there. And I just recommend that anyone who's gonna be handling the food, that volunteers that are coming in. Verify that they've been vaccinated.
We can do that.
Just for health purposes. Do we think that's a good idea?
Don't disagree.
I agree, okay.
I will speak to, we'll be there that day, that morning, and.
I mean, I'm just talking about the food handlers, if someone wants to come in and help set up chairs and whatnot, that's one thing, but if someone specifically handling food that's being distributed. I think it might be a good idea to say.
I think most of the guys who are on the food are usually the kind of.
Regardless, without getting into specific names of people, we wanna, you know, still want to ensure people's safety.
No problem, we'll definitely take care of that, that one. Um. Anybody? Mr. Coin, you talked about some topics you wanted us to get dealt?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Uh, no, just, you know, we had a late snowfall and our guys were out there. The roads looked like clean, and I saw them still out there cleaning our park, myself, kudos to them and, and many thanks.
Must not let it more or. My wife called to complain, she went to work, she just had to call my council. I could barely get there, my car was dry, I said, I'll make sure I mention that. She did, and she called me right up.
Oh, oh you.
Just kidding, they're doing a great job, just posted.
Councilman, I, anything you want to add?
Not really, I'm just, uh, getting agenda up, twenty-four hour. With all the.
Agenda was up yesterday, I think around four o'clock. Yes, it was, the agenda was up, we had to change some resolution. Today especially, have to be reworded.
So it's not going to, it's going out on the website, according to us?
Pretty much, it goes out at the same time, I know that it was up, because I made sure.
Because I got the email today at around noon.
Okay, that's probably the one today, but I know that the agenda was put on the website, put out yesterday, only at the four o'clock, because I made sure of that, so it's out there. With that being said, let's go on to resolutions. Madam Clerk, you're up.
Okay. Just an FYI, it's a little difficult to hear tonight, so I don't know if the microphone is in the same place, not in the same place, it's, it's kind of difficult to hear you guys.
Go ahead, you're up.
That's better, yep, okay, resolution of the Town Board, the Town of Walker authorizing the Town Supervisor. To sign an intermunicipal agreement for the two thousand twenty-two Orange County Stop DWI Program. Resolve the Town Board of the Town of Walker hereby authorizes the Town Supervisor or is designated. To sign an intermunicipal agreement on behalf of the town associated with the two thousand and twenty-two Orange County Stop DWI Program. Subject to final approval by the Town Attorney, may I have a motion?
So move, second.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Valentin? Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Walker authorizing the Town Supervisor to execute a site preparation and tree clearing agreement with Silver Lake Bridge Development LLC. Resolve the Town Board of the Town of Walker hereby authorizes the Town Supervisor to execute a tree clearing agreement. With Silver Lake Bridge Development LLC in the form. Annex here too as exhibit A, subject to review and approval by the Town Attorney, planning board attorney and consulting engineer for the town, may I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Coin?
Yes, hold on, where is, where is this? So, the agreement, I have to redo a little bit of the agreement, it's our standard clearing agreement. That me and Dave Fritz came up with, I have to add a couple of things to it, but they've already gotten their conditional final approval. So it's gonna be the standard agreement, the bond amount change, it went from eighty thousand to ninety-one thousand five hundred. This is a couple of things I have to tweak on it, also have to add that they have to include with tree clearing agreement, their tree clearing plan, which we're still waiting for. But once we have those things, then it'll be standard.
This is the.
Silver Lake's got.
Over seventeen?
Over seven, on the other side, it's gonna be across from the box.
All the way back.
Right, okay, that's on the other side, so I'll have the agreement done.
Mr. Valentin?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
Resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Walker authorizing the transfer of funds. Hereby resolve the Town Board authorizes and directs the Town Council to transfer funds with respect to the two thousand twenty-one Town Budget as follows. General fund from A eight-six-four-zero-point-four-two-six solar farm expense, thirty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety dollars to A one-three-two-zero-point-four-four-one audit expense. Thirty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety dollars to cover the final payment to our founder Davies for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty twenty, audit and financial statements, resolution number forty-one. Was passed for this on March second, two thousand twenty-two, however, the line specified did not have sufficient funds by the time the transfer was to be made. Hereby resolve the Town Board, hereby authorizes and directs the Town Council to transfer funds with respect to the two thousand twenty-two budget as follows. From SWA five-nine-nine water fund balance, two hundred thousand dollars to SWA three-nine-one, due from other funds, two hundred thousand. From HWM six-three-zero due to other funds, two hundred thousand. To HM, I'm sorry, HWM eight-three-one-zero-point-four-four-one-one, water meter replacement engineering, two hundred thousand. Transfer utilizes water fund balance to temporarily fund the new capital water meter. Replacement project until bond funds are received, bonds will be issued later this year. From SWA five-nine-nine water fund balance, two hundred thousand to SWA three-nine-one, due from other funds, two hundred thousand. From HRW six-three-zero due to other funds, two hundred thousand to HRW eight-three-one-zero-point-four-four-one-one, Rikowski Well Engineering, two hundred thousand. This transfer utilizes water fund balance to temporarily fund the new capital Rikowski Well Construction Project until bond funds are received, bonds will be issued later this year. From SWA five-nine-nine water fund balance, two hundred thousand to SWA three-nine-one, due from other funds, two hundred thousand. From HT one-six-three-zero. Due to other funds, two hundred thousand to HT one-eight-three-one-zero-point-four-four-one-one, Tower Inward Tank Engineering, two hundred thousand. This transfer utilizes water fund balance to temporarily fund the new capital Tower Inward Water Tank Rehab Project until bond funds are received, bonds will be issued later this year. From SWA five-nine-nine sewer fund balance, seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars to SWA three-nine-one, due from other funds, seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars. From HH one-six-three-zero due to other funds, seventy-four thousand nine hundred. To HH one-eight-one-one-zero-point-four-four-one-one, Pulse INI Engineering, seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars. to HH one eight one one zero point four four one one, Hulse INI Engineering, seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars. This transfer utilize, utilizes sewer fund balance to temporarily fund the new capital Holt's Avenue INI project with bond funds until bond funds are received, bonds will be issued later this year. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
I abstain.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Serrano?
Yes.
That's all I have, gentlemen.
Okay, with that being said, I make a motion to go to Executive to discuss some personnel issues.
Specifically, matters involving the Police Department Personnel. Second. All in favor? At seven twenty-six.
Okay, that's all we got for today, I'm pretty sure we're not gonna come back, so everyone have a good night, thanks for joining, see you soon.
Good night.